Hey, we're gonna call the regular city council meeting to order Monday, November 14th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
David Paradise.
Paul Andreaugh.
Kirby Moynah.
Tom Marslick.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonneywell.
Joe Sappi.
Jared Vogie.
Dan Reamer.
Michael Sommerfeld.
How's everyone doing tonight? Is this on? Before I start, I really wanted to say thank you and acknowledge Michael, Christie, Jessica, and I see Roger back there, everybody that was involved in the elections on Tuesday. You guys are awesome. You're truly awesome. So, just wanted to thank you for that. There's gonna be a lot of transition coming in Montrose, just like there is across the nation, and that's really nothing, that's really nothing new. But I believe that tonight, God just wanted me to exhort you to remember tonight and for the future that He's got a plan. It's as, it's as simple as that. I won't go into all the detail on this, but in John 19, some of you may know when before Jesus went before Pontius Pilate. Pontius Pilate said, "Don't you realize that I have the power either to free you or to crucify you? I have the power." And Jesus answered him, "You would have no power over Me if it were not given to you from above." And that is true. God is the one that gives power to those that are in authority. And in the book of Romans 13:1 says that there is no authority except that which God has established. This council is an authority. It's a government that God has established. Those authorities that exist have been established by God, both good and bad. We talked about this last time we had an election. I remember talking, mentioning it then too. Sometimes we're happy with things, sometimes not. But God has established a plan, and He's got a plan. And He will lead you and guide you in tonight and in the coming months and years. He's got a plan, and He will guide you through it. In Second Chronicles, I was, you know, I always spend Mondays when I come asking God what He wants to share with you, and that's why I always have a little something to say. And I know I only have two minutes, but one of the kings in the Old Testament was Jehoshaphat, and he was a good king. And to make a long story short, there were many armies, vast armies, that were coming against him. And when he was told that, this is what he said. Well, first of all, the Bible says Jehoshaphat resolved to inquire of the Lord. That's the first thing he did. He resolved in his heart to go to God and find out what to do. And this is what he said. "Lord, the God of our ancestors, are you not the God who is in heaven? You rule over all the kingdoms of the nations. Power and might are in your hand, and no one can withstand you." Jehoshaphat knew that he had to go to God because God's the one that had the wisdom and the direction and the information that he needed. And I encourage you to always, tonight and always, go to God because He's got what you need, the wisdom and the guidance that you'll need. And here's what he said to God. "We have no power to face this vast army that's attacking you. We have no power. What's coming on us, we have no power over it. We do not know what to do, but our eyes are on you." So that's the big word of encouragement tonight and coming days. Keep your eyes on God and ask Him. He will, He will direct you. So let's pray. Lord God, we do seek you tonight. We seek your wisdom and direction for this council and for this city of Montrose. We don't know what to do, but our eyes are on you. As we enter into a season of transition, I ask, Lord, that you would encourage and strengthen this council and all of the leadership in Montrose. May your perfect will be done in this city, and may you be glorified as all of the transition happens, Lord. And as, Lord, I ask that you would bless Tom as he'll be leaving the council soon, and I ask that you would bless Michelle as she comes back on the council, Lord. We just ask for your blessing upon that whole transition, Lord, and that there would be a spirit of unity and your blessing upon it. In Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we approve the agenda, there are two additions. Under number nine, Reports and Recommendations, Fire Department, we're adding number two, Brush Pile Burning. And also under number nine, Reports, Item D, Planning and Zoning, we're adding a 2A Resolution 2022-32.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
One additional suggestion is to switch nine, D, two, and three. That would be switching the preliminary, the approval of the plat and the tree preservation ordinance because the plat consideration includes the tree ordinance. So having, talking about the trees first.
So change two to three and three to two.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
So that change then will be under two, number two, and then 2A. It's a lot of twos.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as revised.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Ms. Andreaugh?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
One question on this. So I was reading under, it said, just printer maintenance. Is that something that has had to happen frequently? Is that something that should be looked at being replaced in the office, or is that just routine?
That printer maintenance is the annual contract and then the monthly contract.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't just pouring money into a printer that's on the verge of an office space episode, so. Any further discussion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andreaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Wright County Sheriff's Office.
Uh, yeah, just one thing. Um, general reminder, winter parking restrictions, they're starting up on the first, and they run until March 30th, from 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM, those parking restrictions. And any time the streets need to be cleared, I'll push back.
Any questions for the Sheriff Department? Thank you. Request for council action, Mr. Scott Lobrick? Sorry, just state your name and address for the record.
I'm here for my husband and I, and it's 519 First Street North, Montrose. And we've had issues with our water bill and late fees, and we would like for you to waive them. They are, there's no way for us to catch up on our water bill with them. The late fees are almost as much as some as the water bill is. And, I mean, note, this is for water. You can't drink, only good for taking baths and laundry, and seems like a lot of money for only that. And somehow, not too far back, we were getting huge water bills that the only thing we found was a toilet recirculating on and off from time to time, which was fixed by my husband. Your workers came out and they looked at the, I don't know, whatever it is they looked at, and said that there was nothing wrong with the meter. So. And also, for the last five years, the road has been so bad that you can't avoid all the potholes every year. We have to get a wheel alignment on both cars. And they are not old cars, cars. This road has, should have been addressed by City Street Department a long time ago. It's really bad.
So a couple of things on the water. First, the state did say you can drink it, so the Minnesota Department of Health said it is safe to drink.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, as far as the late fees go, I talked with Jess and Christie today, and it was their recommendation to waive the late fees, past and future ones, right?
Yeah.
All future ones?
Forward.
As long as you are able to enter into a payment plan, a signed payment plan with the city.
Yeah, I think Scott and I can try that.
With that, I will make a motion to waive the late fees going forward, contingent on a signed agreement with the residents at 519 First Street North on their water bill.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andreaugh?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. City Council?
Regular city council meeting, special city council meeting, Fire Department meeting, meeting with Republic, and a Park and Rec meeting.
City Council, Park and Rec, and Special Meeting.
Council, Special Council, EDA, meeting with the resident, and the Highway 12 Safety Coalition, and the County Road 92 Bridge opening.
I had Board of Commissioners meetings with the county, EDA, meeting with Republic, and Boltland Bank Engineering meeting.
Regular council meeting, Special Council meeting, and volunteered at MESI Bingo.
Fire Department?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet is the October monthly activity report. Busy month, 35 total calls. Some acknowledgements, we did fire prevention over October, so thank you to the Montrose Elementary School for allowing that to take place, and for all the firefighters that helped out with the events during that week. And then also to Wright County Public Health, they come down every year and get all of our personnel flu shots and booster shots or whatever we need for them to do that as well, so. Also, just kind of to put a quick plug, it's not on the activity report, but we had a very busy past week and a half or so, and it's also a week and a half where we're very low on staff usually because of deer hunting. The guys that were around stepped up, the trucks kept turning when they needed to turn, and they had put in a lot of extra effort, a lot of extra hours, just because of some personnel being out of town who usually aren't out of town for an extended period of time. So, thanks to all the staff over the last couple of weeks that have been around, so. With that, the other thing on the agenda is burning of the brush pile. We'd just like to get permission from council to burn the brush pile off here. It's no longer open for the year, so get it cleaned up when we can. I'll probably just give Coco the go-ahead when the wind is right, and we'll just get rid of it in a day. Probably, that won't be too big of a deal, so. But I like your guys' blessing for that, and a motion.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and allow them to burn the brush pile on a calm day.
I'll second.
Further discussion? They gotta provide their own marshmallows if they're there, right?
Correct.
No other discussion? I'll vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Ms. Andreaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 to burn the brush pile.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. EDA?
Well, we had a meeting on October 18th, the EDA, and we had an interesting, several men come in, developers that were interested in developing a, I'm not sure what you would call it. It's kind of a combination autocross area with condos. It's basically developed for people who have race cars that they want someplace to put them, and I'm not talking about Indy cars or stock cars. I'm talking about regular.
Ferraris and...
Yeah, respectable cars. Basically, what they're gonna do is they're looking at a parcel to the north of town that's to the west of the regional park area. The developers would like to have about 40 acres of the area. They plan on putting a paved asphalt area in that's like 800 feet by 2,000 feet, where they set up cones and they do basically an SCCA autocross style race through there. Then the people buy the condominiums are gonna be quads, fourplexes, and then they can store their cars in the garages in these facilities and then live there if they want for the rest of the year. Now, the facilities can also be, they're gonna be staffed, and they can be used for autocross driver training, police and fire practice, fire department practice, and are, they're really flexible and open on other ideas to utilize the space. So it was, it was an interesting conversation, so I'm assuming they're gonna bring something back to us to move on. And that was pretty much the main topic in that EDA meeting.
Questions on EDA? Planning and zoning?
Mr. Mayor and Council, in front of you is the new language on the updated tree preservation proposal that we did at the last meeting, simplified, and Mr. Gritman's staff did a very good job of making very plain language out of it and making it a more streamlined procedure. Yeah, I was gonna compliment everybody to that effect. It's very easy to understand versus the hieroglyphics we had before that. Yeah, the phone book we got of the last survey. Right. And that's all I got. Unless there's any questions?
Questions on planning and zoning? Tree preservation and replacement ordinance?
Thanks, Chuck.
Mayor and Council, the planners' report is included with your packet this evening. Some of the major changes are, instead of requiring a caliper inch replacement, it's gonna be requiring one tree per 2,000 square foot of canopy. So it's a little bit easier for developers to kind of come up with that with the software that they have. And the required meant would be to plant a tree of at least three inches in diameter at breast height, so a little bit bigger of a tree also. If the applicant removes more trees than permitted as part of the plan, the requirement would be the replacement at a similar rate, but with trees that are at least six inches in that diameter at breast height. So that's if they take more trees than they say they're gonna take, per their landscaping plan and tree replacement plan. One of the other things that was, that's going to be changed, if this ordinance goes through, is instead of having a list of very outdated trees which are, which are allowed to be planted as part of a development, it's just going to refer to the DNR, American Stock Nursery Stock Standards, and the DNR's invasives list. So it's gonna like just be constantly updated because of those standards. So I think it's a pretty good change to the ordinances affected by this, and if you guys approve that, you would just have to pass the ordinance and then the summary publication resolution.
And I saw in there that they are still required to put two trees on every new
Correct.
residential lot.
Yep, that did not change. And a, and a pretty detailed landscaping plan is still required as well.
Are there any questions on the ordinance change?
No, I just think it's a huge step in the right direction as far as that goes, because the other one was pretty outdated and extremely difficult to figure out for developers, so.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance 2022-08.
I'll second.
Further discussion? How much public comment was there when this was brought up at the hearing?
Not much. Not any, I don't believe. There was, we did call for a public hearing, but nobody came. So, it was just an internal conversation, and then the ordinance presented by the planning department.
Any further discussion? Ms. Andreaugh?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2022-31, authorizing the summary publication of ordinance 2022-08.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andreaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Resolution 2022-32.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This resolution will be if you agree to approve this preliminary plat for the Creekside Hollow development this evening. Included in your packet tonight was a lot of stuff with this. It was the planners' updated report after some new material was received from the developer, as well as an updated engineering report, some updated plat information, the original plat, all sorts of stuff. So, the developers are here. If you guys have questions for them, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer those. I know that you guys all kind of watched the public hearing and listened to residents' comments, because I know there are some concerned people here this evening about this development, and their concerns were voiced at the public hearing, so. Just wanted to let them know that you guys all did hear that and watch that, so.
So, any questions for the developers on the Creekside Hollow? You guys could step up there, too.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Phil Sobey, Sheffer Group, the applicant and developer for the Creekside Development. I don't know if you guys have questions right off the bat, or if, if there's anything that, that's, you know, obviously already in the packet or things that, you know, for me to give just sort of a summary recap of what we've done or what we've submitted. We had the council workshop where we came in and discussed some of the concerns that we had based on the preliminary plat approval. And so I think that the, from our perspective, probably the last few little concerns of ours would just be the creek crossing, request for shared cost there. And then, of course, the tree resolution kind of worked itself out tonight, obviously. We decided to stick with the current rightway size and the CD requirements with that. And then we had the phasing, which there was some discussion about that and how that sort of tied in with the road connection, as far as the timing of that. And so we developed that new phasing map to kind of show where we thought, based on the, what we viewed the consensus to be was that we would, you start with that phase one and then not have the road connection until phase two, where that east to west connection would be completed at that point, which it looks like based on the recommendation by staff was that, I think we're on the same page with that, or that we're, that certainly we're okay with that from our perspective as, as far as how we understand that. So I think, really, kind of the outstanding issue for us would, would just be that the cost sharing component of the creek crossing.
I think one of the biggest concerns, and I don't know if you're able to ease any of them with the residents out in Forest Creek, was just that if 29 homes appeared out there, that they would have all that extra traffic, and then the, the market crashes, which it tends to do from time to time, and then they're stuck with an additional 50-some, 60-some cars every single day on one road. I think that was the biggest concern that I had heard from people since our last meeting.
You know, it's certainly a big what-if, and I, I can only answer it to the, to the degree with, with more what-ifs. You know, if, I think I might have mentioned in the, in the workshop as well too, that if we, as far as the market goes, if we're successful in phase one, that will be our motivation to start phase two. If we're not necessarily successful, or the market is not, I guess, in our favor for phase one, it's kind of a catch-22, because the chances are, the motivation that would prevent us from starting phase two would also have to be a lack of sales or poor performance in phase one, which would be, I guess, maybe would possibly quell some of those concerns in that it would be difficult to imagine a scenario where we had great success with phase one, and then it either, you know, just, almost it would have to be overnight, you know, shutdown of market conditions for us to have, you know, go from that speed of what phase one could be to just shutting it down for phase two. So, the way I see it in terms of trying to project the future, it's probably gonna be one or the other in the sense that we'll, we'll either have great success and we will want to get phase two going, or if it's slow and the market's not what we think would, would, you know, sort of qualify for pushing phase two, chances are there's not been a lot of activity in phase one at that point. So I don't think we have the one scenario without the other and vice versa, if that, if that made any sense. But, you know, it's kind of, it is driven by the market, there's no doubt, and clearly, we're still optimistic about market conditions. I don't think that we are anticipating things happening out there with lightning speed in terms of sales, but I think in terms of what we would consider to be sort of normal or average, I think we'd have a pretty good idea after, you know, next, you know, once we open up phase one and have the product out there, it's going to, you know, give us some really good insight as to what that speed of that project would be from that point. But I, I really don't see a scenario where we sell out or complete phase one and have no desire to start phase two, just for the simple mathematics of it.
Now, the way I understand it, the phase two, the beginning of phase two comes in conjunction with completing the connection to Seventh Street.
Right.
I don't know, you know, date-wise how that happens, but that is going to alleviate a lot of traffic flow down Breckenridge. And that's our main concern, because, you know, it could get Neola construction equipment and the people living there, plus the, you know, vehicles involved in your business are gonna be traveling up and down one street right now. The second issue I'd like to comment on is, I, I don't, I personally don't support the city getting involved in paying for any portion of infrastructure for a developer, because that could start a flow of developers knocking on our door expecting us to pay for things. A suggestion that I would make to help you A suggestion that I would make to help you, because it's financial, if I understand it, it's a financial issue for you guys, you know, we could, we have funds in EDA, so, you know, we could have EDA agree on loaning you money at a very low interest rate to help with that, putting that culvert in there, rather than the city just doling out money. I mean, that would be my preference, so that's how I feel about it.
Sure. And I certainly appreciate the alternative offer, and certainly we'd be open to other avenues. But just to touch on that a little bit, I think from our perspective, too, in asking for it, we do feel like it's a unique situation, so I, you know, I certainly can't say that future applicants certainly wouldn't try, but we think that it's unique in the sense that it is a crossing scenario, and there's certainly a huge benefit for the city to have that crossing versus to not have that crossing. And so I think it's unique in that sense, that I don't know that it would necessarily open the door broadly to future developers to say, hey, you did it for these guys, you should do it for us, we're setting a precedent. And I do think that the precedent that is set, if anything is set, is that when perhaps the city has a request as to how the development should lay out versus perhaps another avenue that it could be done, you know, that might be the scenario for whether or not future developments could look at that as a precedent, as to whether they're just asking for cost-share for the sake of reducing cost, or if it's because there's been a request that is possibly one of two scenarios that the development could be, and obviously the second one, including more costs than a first scenario. And so therefore, that kind of opens the door for the request. But I do appreciate your concern for not wanting to have that be the new norm, where, you know, you're participating in this one, and so now people behind us feel like that's the new stick, that's what we're going to measure by, and...
Yeah, and I'm not sure I understand what option one would have been.
Well, we had talked, there was some discussion amongst ourselves about doing basically like a two-sided development, where there wasn't a pass-through, where you had, you know, kind of a east phase, a west phase, and they were separate, still one development in the sense that, you know, it's the same parcel being developed and built by the same people, but it would, you know, you'd have your east entrance, your west entrance, and they would just sort of act, I guess, simultaneously, independently of each other, and didn't pass through, and...
Yeah, I'm not sure you would have gotten as far with that one as you did with the second option, in my personal opinion.
No, no, I totally understand that. And again, that's where we think, you know, where we came to the conclusion that, okay, well, if that wouldn't be approved, and this, to sort of get the approval would be to meet the request of making the connection, that's where we felt like, I understand what you're saying in terms of, we certainly look at things from a perspective of, could it be done and/or will it be done? So I get that it might not have been something that was met with favorability, you know, the two-sided deal, but we looked at it as a standpoint, from a standpoint, that it certainly could be done that way. And so therefore, from a development perspective, of course, you've got to look at all options and say, you know, this is one scenario, this is another scenario, and, you know, which scenarios are more feasible, which ones are more cost-effective, and so on and so forth. And so certainly, you know, the omission of the creek crossing was a more cost-effective scenario, but at the same time, we were very well aware upfront that there was a less, much less likelihood that it would get approved that way. And so we, I guess, looked at that as if, you know, if you want to get this thing approved, this is the way it's got to be, but it is a benefit to the city, you know, in having that crossing, you know, no doubt. I mean, it's certainly with the overall collector system for the city, that the city's trying to achieve, you know, going from east to west, that there was certainly benefit there. And so we've kind of looked at that as, tried in some way to quantify or formulate what that benefit could be, and looked at a couple different scenarios to model that, and just felt like the greater benefit was to the city, more so than to us as the developer, and that's how we come up with that, the breakdown of the one-third, two-third. So it wasn't where we say we want the city to pay for all of it, and we didn't necessarily want to pay for all of it, but felt like, okay, here's how we formulate that and, you know, come up with that percentage.
Okay. So a lot of the discussion generally is going to be on the plat. Is there any questions or concerns about the way that it's laid out, not necessarily the phasing or the cost request, but just how the plat is laid out? All the rest of that will be worked out in the developer agreement, I believe, correct? Okay. I think that the way that it's laid out right now is good. I like it, I think it looks nice, it looks clean, and, you know, the rest of that, I guess we'll have to discuss kind of later, but as far as the plat goes, I like the plat layout that they have. I don't know if you're able to scroll down to that or not, just so they can see it. So is there any comments or questions on the plat layout?
I've got no issues with the plat layout.
No.
I think it definitely looks better than it did.
No questions on the plat layout?
Not on the plat layout.
Okay, with that then, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2022-32, a resolution approving the preliminary plat for a 79-lot, single-family residential project in Creekside Hollow.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Any other discussion on the plat?
Mr. Mayor? I just want to, just to confirm that there's, this plat approval does not include any type of approval for the cost-share agreement?
No.
Just to sort of put that on the record, that this is just the plat approval and not any type of sort of promise or conditional approval of any type of this cost-sharing that we're talking about. So the motion does that, but I just wanted to state that, in addition to make sure everyone was on the same page.
Right, this just approves the layout that we have in our packet. I think we have got these large copied ones.
Yeah, the resolution is approving the plat, considering all of the comments from the planner and the engineer and stuff.
For a third time, any other discussion on or questions regarding the preliminary plat? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to approve the preliminary plat. Thanks.
Thanks.
Park and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tom, I heard you're responsible for ordering this cold weather.
No, I'm not.
Just updating you on the park and rec. The trail plan, obviously, is still a work in progress. We have to visit the last three parks before the next park meeting in December, and then we'll, we should have that document updated, at least have an initial document, maybe February timeframe, if that will meet the city council's requirements. We reviewed the community garden rules, and we're going to add some additional verbiage there, but basically the document looked pretty solid. We're going to discuss possibly in December, we didn't get it done in November, meeting was about some of the fees. The verbiage had something to do with the biological, like people leaving, cardboard and that type of stuff is biodegradable, you know, harmful, harm the environment, you know, that type of thing. So do some late work and check with maybe some other communities and see what type of garden rules they have, maybe like Delano or maybe Buffalo or something, and see if we can tighten that document up a little bit, and then we'll, that document should be done. The city park flyer, we discussed that, trying to update that. There's some parks that are probably named incorrectly, and some pictures need to be updated, and some parks need to be added. So that thing, that original document is going to be tabled until spring, which will allow us time to get out and take some pictures and possibly explore some other ideas, maybe having somebody that's a little bit more, can design it a little bit more effective than some of us people that are not real effective on computers. The Halloween decoration judging, it really went well. All the commissioners went out, and I personally want to thank them for going out, especially Kayla and Michelle, who went out, because they couldn't make it that night, that the three, myself and Toby and Eddie went out. But Michelle and Kayla went out on their own and did a great job. I want to say there was over 30 houses that we stopped off, stopped off at and took pictures. Some, we even got out of the car and introduced ourselves. Nothing like standing out in front of somebody's house in the dark with a flash camera or, you know, on a cell phone, if you're looking out the front window, wanting to know what the heck you're doing out there.
I didn't see that in the police report.
Yeah, 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 at least we weren't dressed up. But anyway, it was well, we were well-received, and they were surprised that we were out. So we had the slide presentation, and we identified top, we identified three residences. But what we'd like to do is propose to the city council is, we'd like to bring those three residences into the city council meeting in December and announce a winner, we know who the winner is, but announce a winner at that, at the city council, right? And then have the mayor or city council or chairperson, whoever, give out the award. And then the other two residents, we'd like to maybe give a certificate of appreciation or something, just to, you know, show that the city cares about the residents, Park and Rec cares about the residents, and it gets the residents involved in the city council, that people haven't never been here to a meeting. So just something that we thought maybe we'd run by and see what kind of your thoughts were on that. The Park and Rec Commission, believe it or not, we got six volunteers that are interested in becoming commissioners. Must be the most popular commission within the city, I don't know. Maybe the word's getting out. But anyway, all the packages, the applicants and the job descriptions have been mailed out. I made a couple phone calls this morning, and I think we just got one tonight, another person, so six or seven. So I'm looking forward to seeing if we can grow that commission, because I think the bylaws will allow us up to seven, if I'm correct.
Seven.
So with Michelle leaving soon because of her election to the city council, that will open up a spot. And so, anyway, we're looking forward to that, we're looking forward to new energy, new positive ideas, and seeing if we can grow the commission. Lastly, just want to say it's been a good year. We've done, we've done a pretty good job, and I just want to thank all the Park and Rec Board commissioners. Wonder if I can get some feedback, what you thought about the Halloween winner idea?
I think it's a great idea, personally. I think getting him involved and getting him up here, I'm picturing like a game show winner in my head, but that's a little too...
Yeah, yeah. We don't want you to be Bob Barker at all, or anything, you know what I'm saying? But I think it would be a good...
I think there'd be one person who'd have to be Bob Barker up here.
But I think it would be, it'd be a good, maybe a good tradition to start, you know, get people involved in the city government and, you know, get them out in front of the city council. So we'd appreciate if we could kind of get that done. So we run it by Christie and council members, we've, or I'm sorry, the commissioner discussed it, thought it was a great idea. That's all I have, I'm open for any type of question or suggestions or...
Do the top three, do they know they're the top three, or nobody knows anything yet?
Nobody knows anything yet, only the Park and Rec does. It was a hush-hush secret, it was a top-secret meeting. Tom knows if that's all...
Yeah, right. There's no such thing.
Boots on the ground. Other than that, that's all I have. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Have a nice day.
Any questions for Dwayne, I guess, before he sits down? You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Uh, city engineer?
Evening, Mayor, Council. First item in your packet this evening under my items is related to the downtown improvement project phase one. Pay estimate number eight has been enclosed in your packet. That is in the amount of $480,166.50. We recommend payment to equally underground in that amount. In terms of the project completion percentage, that puts the project at approximately 92% complete. Be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
What is left for them to complete in that project? And when do they anticipate getting that done? Is that now spring that they're...
Yeah, so currently, what they're working on is raising iron, and ultimately what that is, is providing access to the sanitary sewer and water, sanitary sewer manholes and the water valves, so that in the event something happens with it during the winter, city staff can access it. In addition, the signs, I believe, are scheduled to be installed this week. Lighting should be finished yet this fall. Ultimately, the primary things remaining will be permanent seating and the final lift of Batuminus is really what remains to be completed on the project.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the pay application number eight for the downtown improvement project phase one. I'll second. Further discussion? No matter what, the plows will be able to get out and do what they need to all this winter without any issue?
Absolutely, unless public works staff disagrees with me, but I believe everything's in order for plowing.
Okay. What's that?
Yeah.
Which is? The ridge by the curb?
We chip it up, we gotta replace it, it's our cost.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Second item is pay application number six for the downtown improvement project phase two. That is for Northdale Construction, pay estimate number six, total is $100,592.65. In terms of project completion percentage, that's approximately 85.5%. Council will recall that part of that project, and the reason that percentage is less than the phase one project, is because there is additional mill and overlay to do on First Street, which will occur next spring. I'd be happy to answer any questions that...
Do they know how early in the spring they're going to get to that?
No.
Just whenever they can?
I believe their completion date is June, so as soon as weather permits. Ultimately, there are some catch basin repairs that were included in that. The, there were some issues obtaining concrete within the industry this fall, and rather than having open holes that weren't filled with concrete this fall, they are moving that project forward in the spring. So as soon as weather permits, that project will be wrapped up as well. So as soon as weather permits, that project will be wrapped up as well.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve pay application number six for project phase two downtown improvement project.
I will second.
Further discussion. I'll vote aye. Ms. Andrea.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, wellhead protection plan.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. Wellhead protection plan. Update for council, the wellhead, there are two components of a wellhead protection plan. It's they're, the Department of Health refers to it as a phase one and phase two. Phase one has been completed. The next step in that process is completing phase two of the plan or part two of the plan. Ultimately, the part two identifies potential contaminant sources within the drinking water supply management area. Identifies how any potential contaminant sources might be addressed. Also identifies preparing goals associated for the management of the drinking water supply management area. And then identifies objectives and a plan of action for implementing those goals and objectives. Next step in the process is formulating a wellhead protection team. And then this plan is required to be prepared prior to February twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. That approval process goes through the Minnesota Department of Health. It'll be reviewed by local agencies in the area as well as the Department of Health. And that process, like I mentioned, needs to be completed by the twenty-fifth of February, two thousand and twenty-four. So that process will be kicking off and moving forward, forward soon. And it is a statutory requirement of the, of the Minnesota Department of Health. So I wanted to make council aware that as you start hearing about wellhead protection plans, that's exactly what it's related to. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
No questions on that? Jessica, will that require a motion?
This was just an update, right?
Update. Pheasant Hills backyard drainage quotes.
Mayor, Council, as directed by council, we have obtained quotes for the backyard drainage improvements in Pheasant Hills area. Now, we solicited three quotes, obtained two. And they have been enclosed in your packet for your information this evening. And certainly be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Danny, this is not something that Public Works can handle, correct?
Correct.
I mean, one, one of these quotes is obviously more favorable than the other thirteen thousand compared to seventy-four thousand. I, I think that since the city had started work on this eight to ten years ago, we, we have an obligation to finish it.
I just want to provide a little additional sort of insight and advice onto this process, how it normally works. You know, I'm not familiar with the, the process or whatever did occur eight to ten years ago. My understanding is there was no council action to approve any such work. And usually, you know, my advice is, you know, council action should be based on council action. And to allow the city to expend public funds, there needs to be an explicit public purpose. And so generally in a situation like this, it would be something that is caused by the city. Or if it is part of the city's water and drainage system. So I think that there, you know, potentially depending on what the city wants to do, there are ways to, you know, maybe attach this work to a legitimate public purpose. I just don't, based on the information that, you know, I have, that I think Jets, Gas and Staff have, I'm not sure if we're there to approve or to, for me to be able to recommend approval of something like that. Just because there aren't the facts in place that, to, to support it. I know that there, you know, it's frustrating that there is, you know, evidently water that is coming into this, these properties and that there was some city work done in the area to address some of this, this water issue. But just so you know, I'm not at the, well, I wouldn't advise, you know, moving forward on this. I know that's not what you're asking necessarily today, but you know, there potentially would need to be additional fact finding. And linking the facts to a legitimate public purpose is, would be my recommendation today.
Would you be able, would December be enough time to get all the facts and information that you need?
I believe so. I think we'd have to work with, the city would have to work with the, you know, the property owners in the area to, to get some of this because there isn't, as, as far as I've seen a record of, yeah, I know last time there was the mention of the city was sued, which was the impetus for the first, I'm not going to call it phase one. We've had a lot of phases today. But this sort of first, whatever happened eight to ten years ago, you know, I don't have any background on that. And so, you know, the proposal may be like we discussed last time, you know, a petition and waiver type agreement where the city is able to sort of facilitate the work and that's the assistance we provide. And then it's assessed against the properties that are benefited from this work. So December, probably as long as we can get sort of, I mean, I can respond to what we have in December in December. If that was acceptable to the council.
I think based on that, I think that we should table this then for later discussion, so.
And if you would, if the direct staff to follow up on.
Yeah, just make a motion and table and direct us.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to table this until December and direct staff to seek further information about the Pheasant Hills backyard drainage issue.
I'll second.
Further discussion. I'll vote aye. Ms. Andrea.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Any other updates?
Jared? Nothing else for me unless council has any questions.
Questions for Jared? Nope. Public Works.
Mayor and Council, the, I've got a couple of updates. Update number one, new employee Keegan Hayson started October thirty-first. I believe he's going to fit in well with the water and sewer department. He's pretty knowledgeable from his background. So he's working on acquiring the appropriate licensing. And so far, so good. Update number two, back in October, we came to council asking for a hundred and ninety-five thousand to remove some bio solids at the wastewater facility. Originally in two thousand and twenty-one, we thought it was going to be six hundred dry ton. We came to the council meeting for an amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand for two thousand dry ton. It was hauled out last week and it ended up being one thousand, two hundred and fifty dry ton. We asked you for a hundred and ninety-five thousand. The total bill ended up being a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and three. So it was less, we overestimated this time to play safe and we were overestimated by seventy thousand roughly. So it's gone. Other than that, it took fifty-nine loads. They hauled it to, I believe, Vonco Waste Management Campus and Becker.
Fifty-nine loads.
Fifty-nine loads and they did it, they did it in two days.
Wow.
With a side dump, roughly about twenty, twenty to twenty-two tons of load. That is all I have. If you guys have any questions.
And, and we won't ever let it stockpile like that again, right?
Nope.
No.
That was just going to be my question. You're working on a plan to make sure that that doesn't happen?
We will start talking with Buffalo hopefully in the spring and set something up. But if Buffalo is not interested in this, I'm just telling you, we will probably be doing this again, but not in such big bulk. Right? So.
As long as there's a plan in place where.
This was eighteen years of sludge. Now, mind you, the population was a lot less back then too. So that kind of sludge could be probably brought up in ten more years. If the population keeps growing, so. Will it ever be that much? Hopefully never again. So I will try not to have two hundred or a hundred, one thousand, two hundred and fifty tons of sludge in a bag at the plant.
Perfect.
Okay. I have nothing else. And I want to hit on what Coco was trying to bring up earlier. I just want the public to know, anybody in the construction area, being the second lift is not on the tar. We are not plowing curb to curb. Because it will destroy the curb and destroy our plow blades. And I'm sure we will be having, City Hall will be having questions about that. But until the second lift is put on next spring after weight restrictions are off, that will not happen. So there's going to be probably some complaining, you know, people getting in driveways. They're going to have to shovel out past that little bit of curb line. Not saying we're not going to jump it. Accidents happen. But I just want the public to know this. Oh, and as far as the Pheasant Hills project, that is done also. The, the drainage out there was repaired by Keighley and I believe it's completed.
And Forest Creek's done too.
Yeah, Forest Creek Trail has been repaired and done also by Keighley and completed.
Any other questions for Danny? Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, old business, refuse and recycling RFP update.
Mayor and Council, myself, Mr. Paradise, Mr. Marslick, Mr. Herman and a couple of other people had a, from the legal team, a couple of other people from the legal team, had a meeting in October regarding the RFP and some potential solutions from Republic. Mr. Herman is here tonight. If you guys have questions, have him come up and speak about that. And then Mr. Paradise and Mr. Marslick can talk about the, the meeting and their recommendations to the rest of council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. My name is Matt Herman with Republic Services. As Ms. Bonneywell stated, we, I think we had an excellent conversation last month. I was very excited to have it. Without going into all the details, I, I will openly state that we've made no, no, no attempts to claim perfect through the last spring. There was an awful lot of change within this community and within our company for all of our employees on the phone and in the cab of a truck. We changed a lot of things and we changed a lot of things really fast. And I know customers and, and our staff felt it. All across the metro area, we moved routes, not just with, I mean, more so than within this community. We had drivers in different places doing different things. And for our local Randy's team, when we converged, when merged the two data systems, we had took some time and invested in building a bridge, a data bridge that would allow their onboard tablet to work. When we rolled out in April, that didn't work. So our entire crew that was used to driving with a tablet telling them what stop was next, they didn't have that. And it took us until June or July to get that up and functioning and ready for them. And I think as, as we look at how all the changes worked, that was a big one for service within the city. As we talked at the meeting, we were able to pull some data on how many misses there were. And, you know, we're used to nearly none, you know, a couple of phone calls a month about, hey, what happened? In April, May and June, we were twenty or thirty-five phone calls a month, which is not normal and it's not where we are now. So happy to report, we have gone back to, you know, very close to normal. September was, was eight recorder calls. October was ten, November so far is five. And again, those are just reports. We don't, it, it's not, who knows what the, you know, they're, they're saying it's a miss. We probably went back for it, but nobody's perfect. We were far from it and we're getting closer to it and I'm, I'm very thankful for that. A couple of things that we discussed as a group that I'm also very hopeful for moving forward, getting back to understanding expectations and meeting them. Number one is operating with just better communication. And I think one way that we've discussed doing that, Ms. Bonneywell and I have a regularly scheduled first Tuesday of the month service check-in, which will, we're actually going to meet tomorrow, but then after tomorrow, we'll meet on the first Tuesday of every month. Standing agenda to look at service concerns, review emails, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Discuss education outreach opportunities, look ahead at cleanup, road construction, other things that we shouldn't have to be surprised by. So I think formalizing a chance for her and I to spend a half an hour together every, every month will be a very positive way. And then as far as allowing residents to communicate with us more simply, we do now have up and running an email address, which is montrose@republicservices.com. And that's an email that can be made available. Hopefully we'll, we'll get it out to the community. They can shoot us an email, hey, my, my garbage didn't get picked up. I have a billing question. The person responding to that might not, it might be me. It might be somebody else on our local team. We may not answer every single question, but we'll give them assurances that we're getting it to the people who will. For routine every day, you know, you missed me yesterday. Sorry, we'll be back. I think it's going to be a really efficient, effective, we've done it in some other communities. It's an easy way to open that door and stop people from feeling frustrated when they can't get the message out.
I'm sorry, Matt. I didn't hear. What's your, what's your potential go date on that?
That's live right now.
Oh, it's live now? Okay.
Yep. And that'll be monitored by, there's five or six people in our local team. So three of us are on vacation. There's still people watching it. It's not going to an individual. It's monitored by team. And I'm, I'm very excited for that. The last thing we talked about in our hustle and bustle that was April of this year, we did not take the three and a half percent price increase, but the contract allowed us to take for this calendar year or for that twelve month period, April to April. And we are going to forego that, not take it for the six months that's left in that term. And then not take it when April comes around, we'll just take a single three and a half percent PI. So we'll operate the contract essentially three and a half percent behind where it would have been. So those are some steps we discussed that I hope will show our commitment to service for the residents and, and for council here. I think we're offering a great value. I, I will not, we did not have our best six months in the front half of this year and we're aware of that. And we're doing everything we can to work on that and to continue to get stronger as a team. And myself and, and my partner Deb Gatz, our team is always here for council. And if you get a concern from resident, you just call us and we'll figure it out. That's always been our commitment and always will be. And hopefully with some good two-way communication and good communication avenue for the residents, we'll get issues up and resolved and, and have a much better next six months is my hope.
Great. Outside of the email, is there a phone number people can call that gets them to Delano?
So the agents that used to sit in the Delano office and answer the phone are still answering the phone when you dial seven, six, three, nine, seven, two, three, 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 five. Those folks are still there. They're sitting at home, some of them in Montrose, some of them in Delano, and they're answering the phone. If there's peak times where it doesn't go to that Delano pod or that Minnesota pod, we can't really control exactly who answers that phone call. The vast majority of the times I test and call, I get one of our local reps. When you call seven, six, three, nine, seven, two, three, 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 five. If you Google Republic and call a nine, five, two number, you're going to go around that Delano and Minnesota pod and get to the broader group. So we continue to advertise the seven, six, three, nine, seven, two, the Randy's number to folks. But at, short of that, we don't have another person whose job is to sit and answer the phone locally. If there's an escalation, an emergency, a challenge, a question, that's what I'm for. And I would encourage you to, to get those to me at any time and we'll, we'll, we'll take care of them, whatever they may be.
Uh, if, if people didn't receive any kind of service for a week or two weeks or whatever, was there any talk at the meeting of like refunds for those weeks or anything like that?
We have, as a company and locally, we will issue credits. If we can, if we can look and see that an. We have, as a company, a- and locally, we will issue credits, if we can, if we can look and see that an error was made. Uh, through this, a, a, a city on the other side of the metro was weekly recycling, and they got input as in every other week, they missed two weeks of service, and they were credited for that. Um, in other parts of the metro, we've had yard waste customers that the routes haven't been able to be completed, and we've, we've credited that. So, on a case-by-case basis, I'll take a look at it, and it's, it's not something that we're afraid to do. If we made the mistake and the service wasn't provided, we'll, we'll meet that customer somewhere and, and get that result.
Have, have all the other, like, billing, transferring issues, have those kind of been resolved? Because I know that we ran into that where, you know, people were getting notices, myself included, saying we didn't pay our bill for Randy's, but, we had it on auto pay, but it didn't transfer over to Republic, so has that all been kind of figured out, now our people have all logged on to Republic now?
I do, I, I, I do feel very strongly that that issue has been resolved, um, and, so two separate billing issues that we dealt with, one was the auto pay. We locally were not informed that the auto pay wasn't gonna roll, and then we were told that there was information that went out with the billing, which I've talked to several people, we don't think it did. So I think that was a poor piece of communication, but after the fact, now it's crystal clear how we should have done that better. I do not expect that to come up again. One of the things that came out of our meeting, we had a list of delinquent accounts that are going through the certification process, I believe there was thirty-seven. So we went through every one of those to make sure that those weren't auto pays, that were being l- looked at as delinquent, and there was only, there was only one of those that was a previous auto pay, and I've called that person and have not heard back, so I don't think that's an issue. So I feel really good that the amount, you know, the, the number of debt that is still out there, that's going through the certification and assessment process, is not related to auto pay. And then the other issue that we had related to billing, which was a one-off, we had a, a printer that double printed invoices. And if you're, if you were on auto pay at the time, when it printed an invoice, some are actually printed, or the digitally printed ones, it said, hey, there's a payment coming due, even though you just made a payment. And then when the printer caught it, because nothing was actually double billed, they pulled it back and killed those duplicates, and then you got a message saying there was an error and a payment couldn't be made. Those are automated messages that obviously sent very poor messages. The error was, they were, they were attempting at that point to issue a second bill, the system caught it, nobody's account was ever billed twice. But on the auto pay side, it was, the automatic communications were in error, caused some confusion.
Yeah. And then my understanding, too, is that it's gonna be, we're gonna do a ninety-day review on services, right?
Uh, my intent is Jessica and I are gonna meet-
Monthly.
Every thirty days, and, and that's pre-scheduled out, I think for eighteen months, so I'm, I, I'm available to you anytime that you want me here, that you want Jessica and I to prepare, you want me to prepare something. We can, when we meet, we can have a summary of what we talked about, those bullet items, you know, we're gonna go through whatever emails we have in the inbox, here's what we saw, here's what we did, if that's something you want to have included in your packet or informally, formally, I'm happy to share any information you want at any time.
Are there any other questions from Matt?
Kind of circling back to yard waste, is that something we could possibly get added out here?
Yeah, and so in, in the RFP, we did submit a number for yard waste. Um, there's a couple different ways to look at yard waste, how it's offered in the community. So right now, we do not drive a yard waste truck west to Delano. So we just don't come this way for yard waste, or we would already have anybody who kind of wanted it could just get it on the open market. The open market yard waste, um, is about a hundred and ninety dollars a year, probably right around two hundred dollars a year next year, and that'll generally be, um, second week in April till, I think, open market ends at this, this Friday, so this week, the week before Thanksgiving, weekly pickup in that window. Um, we could, we could discuss making that open market offering available, a lot of it depends on how many people are gonna do it. We don't wanna drive a truck out here for four people.
Right.
So the other option, and the option that I think was reflected in the RFP and certainly in our response, was if we wanted to make yard waste, just like recycling, everybody pays, I think, I believe our bid was five dollars a month. And if that's just an additional, it's on the bill, everybody gets a cart, we'll pick it up on Fridays. That's the way that now we know that we're coming into town for that, you know, it's five bucks a house. So we can talk about that, and there's, there's other things in between, you know, we've, can look at, at tiered pricing, but, the easiest way to enter that discussion for us is maybe a survey. Is it twenty people that want it, or is it two hundred?
Right.
And I think that helps us understand, is it two hundred bucks for the twenty people that want it, or is it five bucks for everybody? And those are big differences, and it really, uh, the best decision there depends on, is that number closer to twenty or, you know, a thousand?
Yeah, I was just kind of thinking, as far as our compost goes and stuff like that, just maybe people having another option to get rid of some of that yard waste. You know, granted, it's just grass clippings and stuff like that, but, you know, it might be something to look into.
What would be the number of people that you would want interested before you'd look into something like that, or that would be possible out here?
I don't know, I'd have to go back to our operations and, and, and look at that, and see if we have interest from any other, of the, any of the other townships that have expressed interest. Um, I, I, I would have to dig in a little bit more detail.
I would just like to see it personally on an individual basis, more than just everybody, I mean, I already know a couple people that have two recyclings and a garbage can, if they got four bins sitting out in front of their house every day, or every week, it's-
And w- we really enjoy carted yard waste service, we're moving, you know, it used to always be bags and piles, we're moving to automation. We can do it more efficient and far more safe for our employees to have a cart that they can get. So in that case, if you need two carts, you get two carts. And then we have more carts, we have carts everywhere. But there's other technology, yeah, it used to be either a rear load or an automated, we have these Corrado containers that go on the front of a frontload now, which kind of can sometimes do bags and carts, so w- we're evolving that a little bit, but, i- if there was interest in the community at the end of spring, doing an online, or at the end of fall here, saying, okay, you just, it snowed now, how many of you would have loved to have this? I think if, if that's five or five hundred, it changes our approach so drastically, I think that'd be a great data point, just to know where we're sort of entering that conversation at.
Yeah. Yep. So in that email for any issues or anything, was montrose@republicservices.com?
Yep.
And then seven six three nine seven two three 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 five for Randy's in Delano.
That is, that is still the local number.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Uh, new business.
Um, because of the RFP being out there, we need to have a motion-
To rescind the RFP.
To probably rescind, cancel the RFP and, and stay with Republic for now.
Mr. Mayor, I agree, and I think the language can be, sorry, I'm just starting. You know, the motion can be to terminate the RFP and reject Waste Management's proposal. Because then that terminates everything right now, um, very clearly, if that's what the City Council wants to.
Well, I will make a motion to rescind the RFP and reject Waste Management's proposal.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Ms. Andreyov.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
All vote no, motion passes four one. Uh, new business. Rate study quote from ABDO.
Uh, Mayor and Council, included in the packet this evening is a rate study quote, um, from ABDO. This is to do a utility rate study based on projections, uh, taking into account wastewater upgrade, uh, water treatment facility, all of that stuff, um, and to come up with sort of some options for rate increases or rate changes, um, for the future. The total for that is thirteen thousand five hundred, and that would be for the whole thing.
And this is something that we can't handle at City Hall to do a rate study on this? Or is that something cities typically don't do?
Yeah, well, they're gonna do a lot of, like, projections as far as the investment needed for, like, the, the wastewater plant and all that, and I, I think it would be better coming from a financial, um, professional. They are sort of our financial advisors and auditors, so. It's just a, a quote, if you do, if you want us to do it in-house, we certainly can look into doing that, or we can look at other quotes. I'm sure Bolton and May would be able to do some, um, something similar as well.
Uh, just me personally, I'd like to see what the, the feasibility would be of staff doing it, as well as getting some quotes from other companies, if we can find something better, that's just my opinion, um. I don't know, other thoughts?
I'd, I'd like to see some quotes, other quotes, too.
Okay, well, we'll look into some other options there.
Uh, regional safety group interim agreement.
Mayor and Council, staff has been trying for a while since Wayne was here to find a new, uh, safety group training that's required, um, for all staff every year. Um, our safety trainer retired last year, and, uh, we haven't had safety training since then. This is through the League of Minnesota City, it's a regional safety group, um. So when Wayne was getting quotes, it was around, um, fifteen hundred dollars a meeting, and so this is one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars per meeting, um, and they're proposing eight meetings a year, so that would be th- thirteen thousand two hundred. However, the league pays six thousand six hundred dollars of that, and then the remaining six thousand six hundred is divided by our team, which is five cities. Um, so the total amount for the annual amount, if we do eight meetings a year, is one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for the annual amount, not per meeting. Per meeting is about one hundred and sixty-five dollars. So it's probably as cheap as we're gonna be able to get for any sort of safety training, we've looked, and it's expensive.
And there was also some thing from some of the more populous cities in that group that they would be willing to, or would prefer to take on more cost based on having more staff-
Yeah.
-in the group, so base it more on per, per trainee than per city, so-
I think that would probably be the maximum, yeah.
The quote we're looking at would be the highest.
Yeah.
You said that's about twelve hundred dollars a year?
Uh, one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars per year, for eight meetings. So that would be like eight months of training, because they do one per month.
Is there a yearly requirements on hours of training?
There is, I think we're required to have six meetings, if I'm not mistaken.
There's not just hourly requirement, it's just-
Um, it's, it's certain items that have to be covered, and I believe that the trainings are supposed to be, like, hourly, so, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was just curious, I know that working with, uh, DHS and DOC, they require twenty-four hours of training a year, so I didn't know if they're-
Most of it's required for Public Works, um, their stuff, um, some of it is required for all staff, so this is as good as it's gonna get, as cheap as it's gonna get.
Uh, this is a conjunction, um, the other cities getting involved in this are Waverly, Howard Lake, Kokato, and Dassel.
And, what'd you say, Waverly?
Dassel.
Waverly, Dassel, Kokato, Howard Lake, and us, yep, five.
Um, and then the meetings would shift every once in a while to different cities, um, our community center, their community center, so on and so forth. I think it's an opportunity the city needs to jump on.
Absolutely.
Yep, I agree, uh, League of Minnesota Cities does some great things, and-
If, they also offer, uh, add-on classes, if we feel we need to add on other classes, obviously you would have to incur those costs, maybe talk to other towns and see if they wanna come to those classes as well. Um, like slips, trips, and falls, that'd be more for Public Works than people in the office, right? But, um, that is some, once we get the ball rolling, you know, get our year done, and then see if there's anything else we wanna add, I just wanna let you know, there's more than just the six that's optional, this is just what we have to have done. So.
This also offers, uh, free access to NeoGov online safety training, so they have some different, uh, videos and different trainings available online as well, so, um, it really, it's really a great service for a great price here.
Yep, I totally agree.
How many trainings have Public Works done this year? Okay.
Zero.
Zero. We're trying to get a few in before the end of the year, so we're trying to get this wrapped up so that we can have at least two or three before the end of the year here.
Okay.
From an emergency management side, this is a big thing, too, A, it's being them prepared correctly, and B, it's letting them network with people who we're gonna call if we have an issue, or if we need to send some people over to them. Networking is worth that money, all.
Um, it is an interim agreement because, uh, the league themselves are in, like, negotiations with the company that does the training, so it's sort of, um, pending new prices and different things on their side, so that's why it's interim and not some agreement. I'm not sure if we'll get another one, or if this will be the only agreement.
Okay. So do we need a motion to approve this, or? Final agreement?
Uh, please approve the interim agreement so that we can get started with the program, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the interim agreement for the safety group.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Andreyov, or Ms. Andreyov?
Aye.
All vote, yes. Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, open forum, we have two, uh, Matt Lyric.
There might be a third here.
Oh, thanks. Uh, just state your name and address for the record, and then Jess will start the timer.
Matt Lyric, one of we, the people of Minnesota. My address is one one five Nelson Boulevard, Montrose, Minnesota. So, I'm gonna continue off of the wisdom of the invocation. We were granted this authority by God, and I am blessed to live in a, a country where I am the government, we, the people, are the governing authority. With that said, I, I respect you as my city council. Okay? But I'm here today to talk about Dan. And I, I never, I never had to be here in the first place. If, uh, the city of Montrose was committed to providing high-quality public services and everything here, right? Defamation of character, Dan demanding that, uh, we have a Wright County chaperone to inspect my water meter. That night when I went home from the meeting, I, I realized that I was wrong, and that I wasn't gonna agree to that. I didn't do anything wrong, I did not threaten Dan, I threatened to sue. Uh, I explained to Dan how the Constitution works and how my liberty works, and he was vulgar, he was, and so was I, I swore. But, we talk about, uh, you know, here, anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect- you know, here, anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, where, where was that? Where did I get that on our phone call? All I want today is an apology and I'll forgive, repentance, repent, you know, apologize and I'll forgive, we can move on, that's all I ask. He, he's supposed to be upholding you who swore an oath to protect my rights. And that's all I ask for today, admittance that I never did anything threatening to you that would make you demand a Wright County chaperone. And then we can put this all behind us, that's all I want.
As far as apologies go, I, I mean, I'm not gonna force Danny to say he's sorry if he doesn't want to. But if you do have a complaint against an employee, I would encourage you to come up to City Hall and file a complaint so that it can be handled through the Personnel and Employee Relations Committee.
So as, as the city council, you are not going to protect me. You're gonna protect an employee of what, the corporation, of city of Montrose? I don't understand.
I'm not, I, I guess I'm not picking and choosing sides on this one, I'm just saying that if you
But that you don't get to, that's my point. We, the people, demand to be treated appropriately.
Yes, and, and so does all of the city staff. And that's why I, I said that if you go to City Hall and file a complaint, then it'll be handled the way that it's supposed to, through the proper channels.
I was told that the union would sue the city.
The union may have an issue with it, sure.
Okay, so
Mr. Lyric, your three minutes are up.
Um, no, they're not, I, I
Well, I just, I
I'm, I'm sorry, but you are, you do work for the people.
Kirby's gonna keep trying to explain to you that we're not gonna force Dan to apologize to you. There was a lot going back and forth.
He doesn't have to, no, he doesn't have to apologize if he doesn't want to, but there has to be reprimand. He works for you who took an oath, did you not?
And that's why I said, if you file a complaint with the city
But we, I'm sorry, but we've already done this, we've already had conversations.
We have had conversations, but you have not filed any complaint with the city yet.
Nobody told me to, I was told to come here.
Yeah, and I'm telling you that file a complaint with the city and that we will look into it and handle it. That's anyone up here on the city council who's a part of that personnel committee that is standing up for you, is handling it the proper way, Matt.
And we've already done this, we've already had our meeting outside of here.
Yep.
Okay, and nothing's happened?
Has there been a formal complaint filed?
Nope.
Nobody told me to, I was told to come here.
Well, now, now it's being told to file a formal complaint and that'll be handled.
Alright, so we're gonna play games and jump through
We're not playing games, we're going through the proper channels.
Okay, so let's talk about proper channels. Well, did he have the authority to abuse my rights, my liberties, my freedom, to threaten me that he's gonna shut my water off? Did he have that authority to do that?
Yes.
Did he really?
That is the Public Works director's job.
He has that authority to, it supersedes your oath to office?
They can, Public Works can shut off water if need be.
Does he have that authority to supersede your office?
I don't think that's superseding anything, that's them following through on their job.
Did you swear an oath to we, the people?
Of course.
Okay, Dan?
I don't know.
Well, that's not acceptable, it's a yes or no.
He is not in an illicit position, Matt, um.
Okay, okay, so is he duly authorized by you, the council, who swore an oath to we, the people? The city code speaks of a duly authorized employee, which I assumed was Dan. Duly authorized by you, the council, I assume? So you're just gonna not speak?
I, I told you that if you file a complaint, we will handle it.
Why don't we just get it over with right here, right now? Did, did I threaten you? You go ahead and answer that question, you don't even have to apologize. So this is how we wanna play this game?
This is not the time or place for this.
How is it not?
We are asked, go to the city and file a complaint.
I've already, we've already had our private meeting for two hours.
Did you file a complaint?
Two hours, that's a lot.
Mr. Lyric, did you file a complaint?
Did you ask me to?
We are asking you to now. And that's your next step, go file a complaint so that it can be dealt with the appropriate way.
Can, let, let's talk about, how do, how does the authority work with our constitution? Is it, is it we, the people and the public servant, the creature, the, the position that we, the people created? Is that accurate or did the position come before we, the people? Are you above, are you above me?
I don't think anybody's saying that, I'm, I'm only asking for you to file a complaint so we can handle it along the proper channels. So that we don't have any
Which is it, I just wanna know, is it, uh, we, the people and the public servant or the public servant and we, the people?
According to the constitution, it says we, the people.
Okay, thank you, so that's, I, I bring that up because I'm trying to, you're trying to kick me out of here and tell me that I'm, I have to do something else, but, uh
I'm, I'm just asking you to file a complaint through the city. And if you show up there tomorrow morning, Christie will hand you the form, it'll take you two minutes to fill it out. And then we'll have a meeting on it and, and handle the issue.
You guys, I thought we were gonna have a meeting on it already, I mean, that's what you told me.
We were going to, but since there wasn't a complaint, we couldn't handle the issue.
You did not tell me to file a complaint or that you can't handle it, now you're gonna tell me that about
That, that is what I'm telling you now, that, yes, that that's what I had found out.
Oh, I don't accept that, I don't, I'm not playing these games, okay? I don't accept that, why would I? This is a game now.
Mr. Lyric, I'm not playing a game, there are other people for open forum.
I understand that, I understand, so let's all work together.
We, we tried working together and now we're here, so let's go through the proper channels.
Yeah, I know, we tried working together, yeah.
And what happened, what happened when we, like, what happened last time you were here and we came to an agreement?
Yep, and we were gonna talk more about it.
Okay, but what happened? Cause who was supposed to, were, were we not supposed to be able to get in there and look at the meter?
Yes.
What happened?
I set up a meeting.
Okay, what happened at that meeting?
What's that?
What happened at that meeting?
Well, they were gonna talk about it, I never heard back, well, I did, it was that the union will sue
What, what came out of that meeting was that you said that it could be inspected as long as there was two other employees that went in along with me there as well.
At the very end of the meeting
Yes, and then after the two hours of talking
He said, yeah, I think it was you, uh, David, oh, whoever it was, you asked me if we can move forward. And I said, no, I said, I want the apology before we move forward or I will never see it. That's how we left the meeting, and then you were gonna talk about it. And, and now I'm being told that you didn't talk about it because there wasn't a formal complaint.
Yes, and I will say that that's my mistake, that I didn't relay that message to you.
So, let's build some, uh, trust here and, and inta, and integrity at the same time. And let's, let's have Dan answer that simple question, did I threaten you, Dan?
Danny said he's not gonna answer any questions.
I understand that, but he works for you, right, the city, which is so again
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna force him to answer that question.
Mr. Lyric.
Well, then
Mr. Lyric, there are other people
I under, I understand, and I didn't, and I didn't, I did not, uh, speak up when, uh, anybody else was talking, I didn't cut him off.
I know, but you are over your three minutes and I would just kindly ask that you sit down.
Again, we, the people, but we, the people and which is it? So you, you are granting me, uh, I mean, am I supposed to say thank you for three minutes? I don't understand.
That's the time allotted for the open forum, and I'm just asking
By who, by public servant?
That's what the rules of open forum are. I'm just asking that you abide by them and let the next people go.
I object.
Well, I would just kindly ask you to please sit down and we can address this later.
It's not gonna happen, is it?
He said he's not answering any questions.
Well, does he work for the
Go up to, go up to the city, file your formal complaint.
Why?
We've already been through this, I'm not gonna go around in circles anymore.
No, 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 I wanna know why, tell me what's
So we can go through the
Can you tell me what's gonna be different?
Yes, so then we have an actual formal complaint.
So the mayor's word is not good enough? The mayor's, you're telling me that the piece of paper, the, the formal complaint is greater than his work? I don't understand that.
Matt, we're going around in circles here. We're going around in circles here.
Because you are going around in circles, it's not me.
No.
It's certainly not me.
You know, you talk about your constitutional rights, are we supposed to trample on Dan's constitutional rights because he does not wanna
What is his constitutional right as a duty, a duly authorized
See, he won't even let me finish speaking, so
I'm sorry.
As far as I'm concerned, we're, end of discussion.
I'll, I'll listen to you, you're right.
Mr. Lyric.
But if they're not gonna finish speaking
I would like you to file, I would like you to file a formal complaint and then we will handle it the proper way.
I want it handled publicly, like he defamed my character.
I don't wanna have to ask you to sit down again because if I do ask a third time, the deputy in the back of the room will escort you out and I don't want that to happen.
Yeah, I would love for that to happen. Who do you work for, we, the people?
Oh, here we go, Mr. Lyric.
I want an answer.
I, I don't want to go to that point.
Let's talk to the sheriff.
We don't handle employee discipline in a public forum, they don't at any employer. Employee discipline is handled internally, we have a personnel committee for that very purpose.
Correct.
That is why they're asking you to file a complaint, just like any other employer that has employees
But, but
Under the scrutiny of the public.
You're calling yourself an employer now, I don't understand, corporation?
Mr. Lyric, sit down or leave, that is your two options right now.
Hold on, Dan's an employee of
Of the city of Montrose. And we have a personnel committee that can handle complaints about staff.
Okay, but I'm coming to you as we, the people, I'm not coming to you as, uh
You are asking for a public discipline of Dan, of an employee.
All I want is a, an apology, which he's probably not gonna do, but
Mr. Lyric, I, I'm just saying, I, if I do ask again for you to sit down, they will escort you out. And I don't wanna go to that point because I wanna keep
Are you really gonna do that and are you really gonna do that? We, the people, you work for me as well, you understand that, right? You're a public servant.
Mr. Lyric.
Am I doing something wrong?
Please.
So, am I wrong? Have, have, did, did you up, did, did you, uh, did you keep your word?
Yep.
You did. You were gonna have a meeting about this and you didn't keep your word.
Yes, cause at that point, that is when I found out we needed to have a formal complaint.
And, and you and I were texting back and forth and you didn't tell me about this.
And I did tell you, I did tell you that that's my mistake for not relaying that.
I got the text messages if you wanna tell them.
Just said, that's my mistake for not relaying that, that's me owning up to that. And I'm just saying that we need to move on from this right now, cause if I do ask again, he will escort you out and I don't wanna go to that point.
You're threatening me with another public servant?
I'm not threatening you.
That's what I'm getting from this. I was very clear and I've, I've been very easy to work with.
We live in a society of rules and laws.
Yes, we do.
We cannot have total anarchy. You know what I mean?
I do.
We can't have total anarchy.
And that's why I'm standing here firm.
We have laws that
Rights.
You know, we have regulations in a council meeting that when you have open forum, it lasts for three minutes. And a person gets to stand up there and state whatever they wanna state and we, we sit here and we will either take it under advisement or comment afterwards. That's, that's kinda up to the council. So you need to respect the laws that we have in this building for this council meeting, like you want us to respect you and your constitutional rights. That's all I can say.
Then you start, and, and we, the people's rights come before this corporation's.
And you start, what are we, twelve here, come on?
No, 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 you're saying that I'm supposed to do something, well, start.
Mr. Lyric. We gotta cut it.
You, you have, you have anything to say besides fill out or, or threatening to have me removed?
Like you were told that we can't handle that in a public setting like this.
Why?
Because that's the rules and the laws.
Who made that rule, that's not the law.
If we handle issues like that in a public setting, the city will be sued. And we ain't going through that again.
And you're telling me this now, that that, that that big of a deal, you, you just slipped your mind?
That's, this was never part of the conversation before about publicly trying to, you know, reprimand an employee. Which is what you're asking for and
I asked you for an apology or a resignation, that was it. Who's using the Lord's name in vain? I'm sorry, but that says, um, well, I could read them all to you.
Mr. Lyric.
Am I, am I wrong?
Please.
We sat through two hours of this already.
Mr. Lyric, please sit down or leave.
You think I wanna be here? Do you think I wanted to be here at all, ever?
I'm, I don't know.
I never wanted to be here.
Mr. Lyric, please sit down.
Because of Dan's actions, I had to come here.
Please sit down.
And now you're gonna bully me.
I'm not bullying, I'm just asking you politely, please sit down.
Threatening to remove me.
No, we are asking you nicely to sit down.
You were disrupting
Asking you nicely, I'm asking you nicely.
Pretty, pretty please, sit down.
To uphold your oath. That's all I'm asking. And, and your mission statement and just honor and integrity.
If you don't sit down, then you will be escorted out. And I don't wanna go to that point.
Why? I'm asking, why do you want to?
Because I would rather not have a display of Wright County ushering you out of the building on video on the internet. I'm pleading with your better morals to, to sit down and not have that happen.
I, I, it's not about morality, I'm, I'm standing here asking you to be moral.
Deputy? If you won't leave?
Are you sitting down?
No, I'm getting my stuff. This is obviously going nowhere and you need to remember your oath as well.
I am, I am serving the community as
Do you work for the corporation or
Not, yes.
This is a board meeting that follows the Robert rules like every other meeting, okay? They allow you plenty of time and it has come to the point from what I've seen and what council has kinda said, that it's getting to a point where it's disordered.
So is it, it's, it's time to redefine that word, please?
So the conduct? I changed my mind, I'll sit down because there's another open forum, I'd like to But I would like to still hear about that. I would like for everybody to be here. The code of conduct, whether it's any of the following, public, public place, including like to a bus or when we're having reasonable grounds, you know that it will or will tend to launch and go and disturb brawling or fighting or disturbs an assembly from the intersection, perhaps what we call on there, you're disturbing a meeting or an assembly.
Alright, so me is one of we the people asking for my city council.
Sure.
Oath is, look, I'm, I'm asking you-
They gave you multiple solutions.
I'm asking you-
I'm doing my job at that they're requesting and we're over there, so-
Mr. Deputy? Can you please remove him if he will not leave on his own?
I have a conversation with you more outside, but we're done here.
I'm, I'm curious, as one of the people asking-
Sure, we either, we either people also involves one rules and regulations which are, which I just told you about and read to you. We, you're in or leading up to an obstruction of that.
Obstruction of what? An assembly?
Right, let's go. I'm done arguing and they're done arguing. I'm here to keep peace and order, and, and orderly meeting, so-
This is, this was orderly. And you witnessed that they were not answering-
Orderly has various, you know, orderly can mean multiple things. Doesn't have to include yelling and making a scene, you, which you are kinda making a scene at this point, so let's go.
Am I?
They asked you.
Or they, and you.
You are at this point. They asked you to leave.
I'm one of the people. You understand that. So I'm not-
Whose meeting is this? Is it we the people's meeting or is it the corporation's?
This is a meeting of the council, Mr. Lyric, and we are asking you to please leave.
And they already explained to you, okay, they already gave you multiple solutions for a meeting. They already gave you multiple solutions for your request and your disagreement in your three-minute public forum. They have gone above and beyond what they are allowed or like what they're, you're entitled to have.
Entitled?
Let's go. In regards to rules of me, let's go.
The rules of the league, but you're, you're going outside of the law.
Let's go, Mr. Lyric. Lyric?
You're right.
Okay, apologies.
No worries.
I can talk to you more outside, but we're leaving this meeting now so they can continue with, with business.
I will leave, but not worse, okay? We just gotta understand.
We're leaving now. No, I'm not leaving when you want. We're leaving now.
But we the people are in control of this meeting, not you, not the city council. This, this is getting out of hand.
Correct. I, I agree with you and they agree with-
No, I'm talking, I'm not talking about this just right now. I'm talking about everything that's going on.
Sure, and they gave you a solution. It sounded like they gave you a solution. Let's go.
It wasn't, it wasn't a solution. It was like a-
You may not have agreed, you may have not agreed with it, but they gave you an option. Let's go.
I, I will go that route. I will go that route.
Right now.
It's, it's a shame what's happened here tonight.
Uh, Sue Saman, Saman?
Counsel, Mayor, my name is Sue Saman. I'm from Pheasant Hills. And I just, I'm not really sure what you said. I didn't catch all of it and I really didn't understand some of it. So I know there were two bids that came in. You said one was thirteen, one was seventy thousand, which seems like a very odd couple of bids with a sixty thousand dollar difference. And the very first one in September was something like fifteen thousand for grading and another twenty-six for drain tile. And that was in September paperwork. But that one wasn't mentioned. That's like forty-six or seven thousand dollars. My, my thought also is whenever this was put in initially and I was told the city took care of it and were sued. These are neighbors. I, I don't have documentation, but I was told then the city had taken care of all of it themselves and there wasn't a contractor that had done this. And so if they only took care of part of the problem, I'm just wondering why the rest of the problem is not on the city. So that's all I wanted to talk about was that there are three bids. I don't understand the discrepancies and I, I didn't hear all that you said, so I apologize, but, um, this is a mess back here.
I'd be happy to repeat it. I'm sorry if the, if the microphone wasn't picking everything up. In Minnesota, every expenditure from the city has to meet certain requirements for a public purpose. They're called public purpose expenditures and they're listed in statute. And the ways that this type of situation are addressed under the statute are generally if it's a nuisance situation, if this, if it's something that's caused by the city or if it's part of the city's waterworks, drainage and sewage, I guess, system. So what all I was saying was, I don't, for me to make a recommendation to move forward, I don't see in front of me the facts to make that recommendation to show that it meets one of those requirements, one of those, one of those situations. And I understand based on, you know, what's been presented at council or at the last meeting, I believe it was you as well, or maybe two meetings ago, was that the city did in fact go in and do some, somebody at the city did in fact go and perform some work. But there wasn't, as far as I understand, any direction from the council to do that. So it wasn't a, sorry, wasn't a, unless we find something different, you know, official action of the city to do that. And it could have just been, you know, I don't have the facts to sort of say how that occurred. So that's the distinction that I was making.
So if, if the city went in and did something then?
So we're gonna take a look and see if we can find some documentation about what happened back then and, and what they did and, and everything.
And as far as the bids go, I mean, we have no idea what the, one of them was a, the, one of the contractors that was in town doing the roads. So I have no idea why they based their pricing the way that they do, but-
Usually a contractor will bid really high when they don't really want the job.
If it's too small for them or, yeah, if it's a too small of a job and they maybe don't want it.
You, you explained it right, Tom. But yeah, so we're just, we're just putting it till next month and then we'll discuss it again and hopefully we have all of the facts.
Thank you. I'm sorry I put my thing in late.
No, you're fine.
And I was like, okay, I don't know. Can I talk about this? Can I not? So, thank you.
Thanks. J T Kasari?
J T Kasari, two oh two Ringneck Drive. I just came to say thanks to Dave Kirby, the entire city council, engineering, and Dan for taking care of Ringneck Drive in the last three months, give or take. It looks beautiful. Everything's completed. I just wanted to express my thank you to everybody for that.
Thank you.
Uh, upcoming meetings. EDA meeting on Tuesday was canceled. We've now scheduled a canvas board meeting on Thursday, November seventeenth, four PM, City Hall. City Council Budget Workshop, Monday, the twenty-eighth, four PM, City Hall. Park and Rec, Thursday, December eighth, six thirty PM at City Hall. We should talk about that, too. I'd like to move those meetings to the community center if possible. Regular city council meeting on December twelfth here at the community center, seven PM. Planning and zoning, December fourteenth at seven PM at the community center. And the next EDA meeting, December twentieth. So acknowledgements, being that we're so close and just past Veterans Day, I just wanna acknowledge and thank all of the veterans and all the people that served in the armed forces. And we have one of them sitting up right here at the desk as one of our council members, so thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Kirby.
Thank you to everybody who served. Michael as well, I believe. So I'm sure there's plenty more on the, the city hall staff. But also wanna put out a thanks again this year to all the haunters and the non-haunters who decorated for Halloween. So it's, it is fun to go and drive around and see all the lights, so.
Agreed.
Are there any other acknowledgements?
Yeah, my, my, my wife kinda beat me to it, but I wanted to acknowledge the election judges and Jessica, Michael, and Christie for their hard work last Tuesday.
Uh, the other one, too, that I just had thought of is I wanna thank you, Avery, for being the student liaison. I know a lot of this isn't fun to sit through and you sit through it like a champ, so.
Just wish you wouldn't talk so much.
Uh, no other acknowledgements?
I'll just piggyback on Tom's again, you know, election staff, city staff, you guys are fantastic. It's really appreciated. To the residents, great job on the turnout. It was, from what I understand, it was fairly busy all day. And then congrats to David on his reelection and Michelle, congrats on your election. Look forward to what next year brings.
I will second the congratulations to Michelle.
Do we, any other acknowledgements? She said city staff reelection.
I was, yeah, we were all trying to talk at the same time, but we're all trying to say the same thing.
Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I will second. Uh, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andreyov?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We're adjourned.